So I'm going to call this meeting to order. And the first thing we're going to do is say the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, with that, we'll go. Actually, we'll just start by welcoming Panda. Thank you for being here. And we will go to the committee reports. And that starts with you, Ray, the Treasurer's Report. Check the microphone and see if it works. Hopefully it does.
I think I did before. Can you hear me? Is that all right?
That's there.
Okay. So the Treasurer's Report for March 14th, 2022. The account balances as of the end of February. The general fund, $447,454.43. The water fund, $196,463.70. Trust and agency, $25,529.62. Petty cash, $1.79. Village Green, $4,773.92. Hardscrabble, $9,320.65. Health insurance, $4,956.38. And the sewer fund, $9,946.89. The reserve checking balances. Fire department, $5,033.72. Police, $14,586.26. USDA, $134,043.44. Highway, $30,584.44. Snow reserve, $3,279.63. Tower reserve, $17,712.15. Unemployment, $4,544.32. Court reserve, $3,298.73. Office reserve, $972.56. The monthly expenses for the month of February. General fund, $97,360.28. Water fund, $62,279.21. The reason the water fund is somewhat above average for the month was that there was a transfer from the water to the sewer fund of $20,000. And there was also a USDA interest for Phase 2 of $21,460.93. Trust and agency, $817.36. And sewer, $12,665.36. That concludes the Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, Ray. Do we need a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report? Yes, motion?
It's unmoved.
Thank you, Brent. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I thank you very much, Ray.
You're welcome.
Adjusting the camera. There we go. Okay, and after that, it is my reports. And it starts with the police reports. This is for the month of February. There were 314 incidents. 211 in the village, 96 in the town, and seven in the village of Tibbely. Uniform traffic tickets, there were 34, a total of 65. 34 in the village, including three parking tickets, and 31 in the town. And there were seven arrests, three in the village and four in the town. And this is a good moment. Just to mention, the body cameras were installed and they are functioning well. And I and the police department are grateful to have them. And I have the zoning and planning report. Total building permits issued, seven. Certificate of occupancy, zero. Certificate of compliance, seven. Fire inspections, four. And there was one complaint. The planning board, there was no meeting in February due to no agenda. And the zoning board did not meet in February due to no agenda. And I believe that is all. I guess I would like to just mention that we had a workshop meeting last week. And at that workshop meeting, we did, the board did approve the hiring of a deputy clerk. It would be a part-time position. So we will proceed with that going forward. And we'll keep you up to date. And now on to Deputy Mayor Kavancik.
Thank you. And I'll start with the Village Green Committee monthly report. Current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts are as follows. Committee Befication.
Brent, can I interrupt you? I realize I did not, I neglected to mention the Building Department report where the total amount of receipts was $2,354. Apologies.
Moving on, shade tree contractual, $2,500. In our checking account, we have $4,773.92. Village Green had a meeting on February 28th at the Red Hook Village Building. We reviewed the planting list for the 2022 Spring Planting and Arbor Day celebrations. 11 trees have been ordered and sites have been selected. Trees will be planted on East Market Street, West Market Street, Park Avenue, Benner Road, Elizabeth Street, and Garden Street. We reviewed the planting teams, site preparation, and volunteers for the Spring Planting Day. And the 2021 Tree City application was submitted to the New York State DEC and the Arbor Day Foundation. This will be the Village of Red Hook's 20th year as a Tree City USA. We also discussed potential grant opportunities to establish a tree nursery on the grounds of Linden Avenue Middle School to increase the tree inventory and future replacement trees on the school's campus. Residents and businesses interested in having a tree or trees planted on their adjacent right-of-way volunteering for Planting Day are making a contribution to support the Village Green Committee's various community Befication projects may contact David Pearson, the village clerk, or myself.
Brent, if someone was interested in volunteering for planting those trees, do you know when it's going to be and when will we know?
We're looking somewhere at the end of April, beginning of May. So it depends on the nursery and when they deliver.
So do you usually know a couple weeks in advance?
Couple weeks. It would be a good day if we knew a couple weeks in advance.
Okay.
So we'll be sending out, as soon as we know, we'll send out notifications to the volunteers.
And we'll put it on the website?
Yes.
We'll send out an notice to everyone in case we get?
And does it have to be a phone-off? Does this show up? That's great. We'll put you to work.
Great. Thank you.
The Highway Department monthly report for the month of February. The village snow ordinance is currently in effect as of November 1st through March 31st. So this should be my last month reading this. No parking is permitted on village streets from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. And on New York State highways, which is Route 199 and Route 9, from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. During the same period, when snow and/or ice removal operations are underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Police Department or any responding law enforcement agencies. Costs associated with the vehicle towing and storage will be charged to the vehicle's owners. I'd like to thank the residents of the village. I don't think we've had any towing incidences so far, but hopefully we're done with the snow too, but we never know. The owner and/or occupant of every building lot in the village within a giant sidewalk shall remove snow and ice within 24 hours of a snowstorm and at the direction of the Village Board of Trustees. The village highway department may remove snow and ice left unclear at a cost of $2 per linear foot. This cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levy. The Highway Department requests that property owner to remove street-side athletic equipment, garbage receptacles, and other obstacles to prevent damage during snow removal and plowing operations. Revenue from the sale of scrap metal was received on February 17th in the amount of $712. Total revenue generated from the sale of scrap metal in fiscal year 2021 and 2022 is $5,599.95. Since inception of the scrap metal program in September of 2007, $41,892.26 has been generated. And proceeds from this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the village highway water and materials management departments. Residents and businesses interested in donating scrap metal may contact the Village Highway Department at 758-8600 or the village clerk's office. And the Highway Department personnel will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. And my next report is the Red Hook Infrastructure and Intermunicipal Task Force reports. Now, the Red Hook Sewer Project. Meetings were held on February 4th, 18th, and 25th at the Red Hook Village Building. We meet weekly with representatives from Carver Construction, Sastos, Contracting, and CT Mail. And usually the mayor and I attend these meetings. There's, I put down what happened at every meeting, but I'll just cut to the chase. Meeting five. We had two enforced mains happen installed across St. John's Street and West Market Street, including shutouts and key connections. So basically, we have mains coming from the wastewater treatment plant at Red Hook Commons up to on the east side, west side, I'm sorry, of Route 9 to the Four Corners. Actually stops at Frehley Street. We have mains connecting from St. John's down to Linden Avenue on the north side of 199. And we're now up to Old Post Road and working way down from the north side of the village. We had some mud developing at the wastewater treatment plant at Red Hook Commons. And this has been improved with geotextile fabric and gravel. A construction interest has been placed inside the gate at the west end of Morgan's Way for material deliveries. Layover forced main routes, utility locations, and meeting with property orders and service areas continue. Pay applications from Carver Construction has been reviewed and approved by CT Mail. Form E, number one, is being prepared by CT Mail, I believe it has been, and coordinated with the Village of Red Hook. I'll just go quickly through the amounts that we've spent so far on this. And this is, just to give you an indication, keep posted as where we're at. With our general contractor, Carver, we've been billed $265,371.18 out of contractual estimated cost is $6,797,145. So that's our first pay application. It includes mostly mains. We have made a down payment on the treatment plant and some of the tanks as well. Sastos Contracting with the electrical cost. We've been billed $15,994.67 out of contractual balance of $441,974. So these are the first ones and keep you abreast on how we're going on the money side. On the dust we have here. The Village Red Hook Water Distribution System Maintenance and Improvement Project. Meetings were held on February 11th in the Red Hook Village Building with representatives from Delaware Engineering, C3ND, which is our operators, our Highway Department, and Karen and I both attend on that. We discussed options, procedures to extend the Red Hook Village water system into parts of the town of Red Hook. We looked at the status of map showing the village's distribution system, including hydrants, valves, and mains. We discussed grant opportunities to fund asset inventories, mapping repairs, and improvements. Looked at schedules that are being developed to document valve locations, sites, inspection dates, schedules for exercising and/or flushing hydrants, and ability to record and list all repairs via Google Documents were discussed. We also discussed the continuation of asset surveys in the southeast quadrant and the cost and possibility of expanding the survey to include hydrants, valves, traffic signage, cat stations, trees, et cetera. A proposal to prepare a survey for the other quadrants was also discussed. We'll resume in the spring to complete the survey of mains in the southeast quadrant. We discussed procedures and protocols for isolating a particular quadrant versus shutting down the entire village water distribution system for repairs, replacement, or upgrades. We also discussed the village sewer system operations, including pump, three strap, tank, and pump inspections, pumping schedules, and wastewater treatment plant operation and maintenance. Propagation surveys being developed to change out meter heads from radio read to cell read to a carrier. On the intermunicipal task force, both Charlie and I represent the village. There were no task force meetings during the month of February. There were no meetings. These are some of the committees I sit on in the town. No meetings at the Town of Red Hook's Audit Review Committee or the Community Preservation Fund. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of February 28th There are properties listed on the CPF project plan that include the Village of Red Hook. So people want to look at the project plan and see if their properties qualify for preservation. There's a long list of uses we could use this money for. The Salt Kill Watershed Community held no meetings during the month of February.
Just excuse me for interrupting, but where, if someone were to look for that information?
On the town website.
Town website, yes.
This is a town project. Includes both villages and the town of Red Hook. The Town of Red Hook Local Waterfront Revitalization Program Working Group, it's the LWRP. We met on February 22nd via Zoom. We looked at a list of potential projects received from surveys, local organizations, and Red Hook Town Committees for the inclusion in the amended local waterfront revitalization plan, proposed land use plan. Quite a list of projects. I won't read them all, but some include community septic and sewer system in Berrytown, including the Unification Theological Seminary property, public access to the Hudson River, which is a big one that we're looking at. Through the estates, through some of the parks and private properties that are on the river. Expand recreational opportunities, including trails, the site, and construct breakfasty platforms and improve safety in intersections at bridges at Roca Bee and at Poole's Walk. The Village of Red Hook's Audit Review Committee, there were no meetings that we held on for that committee, but the Village Board of Trustees did approve amendments and seek for documentation regarding amendments to the Red Hook Village Local Law Chapter 200, which is the zoning law and the official zoning map on February 14th. Discussions are underway to amend Section 200-10, which is the general business district, and to consider a subsection of Section 200-10 overestablish a new zoning district for the North Broadway area. The Village of Red Hook Public Spaces Initiative. A meeting was held on February 25th via Zoom. We discussed updates on the Pollinator Garden and Waystation Initiative. There's been partnerships formed with Hudson Valley Seeds, Agway, Ozone, and the Old Dutch Village Garden Club. The Red Hook Community Center has offered the PSI room and the Maker Space for garden planting tips and techniques. The Community Center is offer, also offers storage space for seeds, soil, and equipment. A map locating private and public pollinator gardens is being developed. Public spaces, including Richard Abraham's Memorial Park. Memorial Park, Red Hook Community Center, Red Hook Village and Municipal Parking Lot will be located on the map. We discussed using social media platforms and the Red Hook Village website to inform volunteers and the public of current and upcoming projects, initiatives, and events. We also discussed the status of developing a master plan to have Richard Abraham's Memorial Park, including art installations, performance spaces, gardens, and a connection to the Red Hook Town Recreation Park. And lastly, we discussed creating a checking account to the village, similar to the Village Green Committee's checking account. The whole cash donations to the Public Spaces Initiative. And that's it for my reports.
Wonderful. Thank you. Trustee Lang. Next.
Yes. Here we go for Materials Management Report for the month of February. We collected 1.13 tons of commingled, 0.3 tons of cardboard, and 0.95 tons of paper for a total recycling collection of 2.38 tons. And 5.58 tons of garbage were collected and disposed of. And we also took in $2,688 in garbage tags that were sold. So that's in keeping with past months. No great drama there. I also have a report on the water treatment facilities for the month of February. The water treatment plant treated 6,91,700 total gallons of water, which is an average of 246,500 gallons per day. That's also well in keeping with past months and seems pretty stable at this point. There were four samples taken and transported for bacteriological analysis, and they all came back clean. And during the month of February, the water treatment plant used 60 gallons of sodium hydrochloride. So that comes from an average daily use of 2.14 gallons per day. And otherwise, I think we are making headway on some outstanding issues with the water system. But apart from that.
Yeah, Charlie, I'll just add some of them. On the water system, the three wells, those items were $100, $150, and so about that, those were approved last month because they were so small. So they should hopefully come off the list by next month. Several of the wastewater system deficiencies, oh, no, actually, that's not true. Some of the water system deficiencies are a significant expense, and they're included in a WEA grant application that we made, and we're still waiting to hear the results.
Right.
As far as I know.
What is the deadline on that? I mean, when are we?
I think we put it in in November, and we're, I don't know that we know when we're going to hear. I think normally we would have heard by now, but no one seems to have heard yet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Trustee Carol. Okay, so Red Hook Together, I'm sorry.
Red Hook Together's monthly meeting was held on Thursday, March 3rd at 12 noon. The meeting's theme was supporting farms and farm workers in Red Hook. The group broke into three discussion groups with prompts, "Why are farms an asset?" "What are the challenges facing farms and farm workers today?" And "How can we collaborate around those challenges?" Sorry, challenges, not changes. The conversation touched on many interesting topics, including land access, climate change, lack of affordable housing, supply chain pressures, food security, as well as countering misconceptions. Some ideas proposed were grant writing task force for farmers and local food producers, mobilizing community groups to help save crops during severe weather events, co-op models, expanding affordable housing options, and an educational campaign communicating the ways that the community members can find local food and support local food producers. Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee. The committee met on February 16th, 30/23rd, March 2nd, and 9th. The EDC continues to investigate the New York State Community Development Block Grant CARES Act funding requirements. The Red Hook Town Council submitted their edits to the proposed EDC survey. Several EDC members are considering another project proposal to submit to the town board regarding farm worker housing. The Village of Red Hook Communications Committee. The committee meets every Wednesday at 1:30 in the Village Hall Conference Room. The mayor's newsletter went to email inboxes on Monday, March 7th. We encourage anyone interested in receiving updates to enroll online. You can subscribe by visiting redhookvillage.org/newsletter. I'm also very pleased to announce the clerk's office has worked diligently to upload all the village board minutes and agendas to the village website. A special thanks to Jennifer Kavanaugh for continuing that effort to get our agenda center up to date. Bravo. It's a big, it was a big task. We have continued to make progress on the website, notably streamlining the village's notify-me categories to make it easier for residents and community members to subscribe to website updates that pertain to their interests. Also on the homepage, an expanded grid of quick links will help users to click directly to the content they are looking for. Further down the page, Department News, Government News, and Village Events sections will feature important updates. And finally, the village website now includes a community bulletin board located at the bottom of our homepage. We hope to feature a rotating selection of the events and programs that take place in the village. If you have a program or event you would like to submit, please do so by using the form on the website located at redhookvillage.org/submitevent. Village of Red Hook Hardscrabble slash Events Committee. The Events Committee continues to meet every third Monday at 6:00 p.m. The next meeting will be Monday, March 21st, in the Village courtroom.
Recording in progress.
The RHBT Bike Rodeo has been officially scheduled for Saturday, May 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Families can look forward to Bike Safety 101 for their kids, a riding course, spring tune-ups from the Repair Cafe Bike Mechanics, and a family ride through the village. Other events to add to your calendars include the Town of Red Hook's Earth Day Cleanup on Saturday, April 23rd, Rotary's Apple Blossom Festival on Saturday, May 7th, and Four Corners Spring Opening and Plant Sale on Saturday, May 14th. Email Committee Chair Amy Smith at events@redhooknyvillage.org for more info. The Village of Red Hook Human Relations Committee. The Human Relations Committee met on Thursday, March 3rd, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. And Language Access Working Group met on February 25th. Police reform review is ongoing. Research for the Language Access Grant continues, and we hope to have a presentation for the board in April explaining our goals and intended approach for the grant application in June. Also discussed at the meeting on the 3rd was how we can engage with the community efforts to support the Afghan students at Bard College. I attended a meeting on March 9th hosted by Bard CCE to hear further about how we can welcome these students into our community. I'm hopeful that the committee can help to facilitate some of the ideas proposed. Red Hook Public Library Report. The Red Hook Public Library is happy to report that the sales of garbage tags have been growing, and village residents are pleased to have another option. The library anticipates going to bid on the construction project to replace the library's roof on Monday, March 21st. Interested parties can contact Director Dawn Jardine at director@redhooklibrary.org for more information. Finally, the library is excited to be part of the April Big Read along with Bard College and the community partners in Kingston, Red Hook, Ryanbeck, Rankliff, and Tibbely. The novel selected is "The House on Mango Street" by Sandra Cisneros. Sorry. RHPL is committing to having all Big Read programs to be bilingual in Spanish and English. Community members can get free copies of the book at the library in either language and can get more information about related programs by emailing amy@redhooklibrary.org.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. On to regular business. I did want to point out, in case you haven't noticed, you can see our full faces. We went to Mask Optional in Village Hall a week ago. It might have been around March 1st. I can't remember anymore. We are mask optional, so we welcome those to wear masks if they would like. But it is no longer required. However, the court does still require masks. So if you were here for any court business and they're here to see the judge, you do, you are required to wear a mask. We continue to have free in-home COVID test kits available. We have them here at Village Hall. We have a supply at the library. And Red Hook Responds is also now, has a supply, and they are delivering them as well. We also have masks, right? Yes, we also have masks, the KN95 masks. And for those who have
And for those who have gotten those in the past and find the ear strap to be a little tight, you can actually cut those off and put on new ones, and the mask is still good. The COVID numbers have declined significantly in Dutchess County. In the village of Red Hook and the town of Red Hook, it is now equal to less than five cases. So we hope to keep it that way. An announcement, there are village elections tomorrow, held here in the courtroom, from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM. All registered voters in the village of Red Hook are encouraged to come and cast your ballot. It is a special election. It is for the final year of Mayor Ed Blundell's term. I was appointed in May when he left, and tomorrow is an election for the final year of his term. And there's also an open trustee seat. That is also for one year, so please come on down and cast your vote. The next item, I received a letter from the Parkinson's Disease Support Group of the Mid Hudson Valley. And they point out that April is Worldwide Parkinson's Awareness Month. And this is something that is actually near and dear to my heart, because my mother has been suffering from Parkinson's disease since 1995. It is not a disease you wish on anyone, there is no cure. There has been significant strides made in terms of making the lives of those with Parkinson's disease better, but there is no cure. And so I would like to propose that we make April, that we declare April to be Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month. There's a proclamation on the other side of the paper. I should have known that. Thank you to our village clerk, who goes great strides in saving paper. So here's the proclamation. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a progressive neurological movement disorder of the central nervous system, which has a unique impact on each patient. And whereas, according to the Parkinson's Foundation, the American Parkinson's Disease Association, and the National Institutes of Health, there are over 1 million Americans diagnosed with Parkinson's disease. And whereas symptoms include slowness, tremor, difficulty with balance and speaking, rigidity, cognitive and memory problems. And whereas although new medications and therapies may enhance life for some time, for people with Parkinson's, more work is needed for a cure. And whereas increased education and research are needed to help find more effective treatments with fewer side effects, and ultimately a cure for Parkinson's disease. And whereas a multidisciplinary approach to Parkinson's disease care includes local wellness, support, and caregiver groups. And whereas April has been proclaimed as Worldwide Parkinson's Awareness Month for all to recognize the need for more research and help in dealing with the devastating effects of Parkinson's disease. Now therefore, I, Karen Smythe, mayor, do hereby proclaim April as Parkinson's Awareness Month in the village of Red Hook, the county of Dutchess, state of New York. Given under my hand, I will attest to that. So I just wanted to share that with all of you. I'm not sure what color Parkinson's is, not sure what color we're supposed to wear in April, I'll let you know at the next meeting. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the auditor engagement letter. For the sewer project, we are required to do a single audit. Once we have spent $750,000 or more, we are required to do a single audit. We have, the village has engaged UHY LLP in the past, and they have been prepared to do this single audit for the sewer for a couple of years now. So now we are, we are now ready to go. And so I just need a motion to approve my officially engaging UHY to perform the single audit for the village in compliance with our loans with EFC and USDA.
So good.
Thank you, Brent. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions or discussion?
And I believe we have budgeted for this in our budget for the sewer project, so there's a line item anticipating the need for this single audit that is covered as part of the expenses for the sewer project.
Yes, and it's not a bad opportunity for us to have auditors look at our overall books to make sure that we're doing everything right, so.
And it is required.
And it is required. That is also true. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, thank you. The next item is the village wellfields, the solar farm landscaping. Happily, it does feel like spring actually will come. I have been in touch with Sun Common, who is our solar panel partner. They are the ones who had the contract with a landscaping firm to plant the trees and the bushes. As we discussed at a prior meeting, several of those trees have died, and it was within the warranty period, and so the landscaping company is going to replace, I believe the number is 25 trees. They are evergreen trees, and their purpose is to shield, to...
Screen.
Screen, that's the word, thank you. To screen the panels from the neighbors at the south end. There are also bushes, and there are very few of those that actually survived, and so those will be replanted as well. And as with any planting in the spring, it does depend on the weather. The Sun Common has told me, the landscaper said it will be done by the end of April. So we will hold them to that. And I do have a plan to make sure that these trees and bushes get the proper watering that they require. So that's it on that. The next item is about, there's a program at the state of New York called Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. It's run through the Office of Temporary and Disability Assistance, and there is an agreement that we, the village, need to make with the Office of Temporary and Disability Assistance. And it basically says, don't discriminate against those who use the program, don't overcharge them, don't accept money that they don't owe. If we do receive money they don't owe, we send it back to New York State. And of course, don't change the agreement without contacting them first. The whole idea is if someone meets the criteria, that the state of New York will pay the municipality directly. And I think this is an excellent program, and I think that we should sign up to give people the opportunity to apply for this program if they are in need of help.
And information will be located on our website, so people can see where the qualifications are and...
Yes, yes. And I do believe that community action partnership is very good at helping people with applications for a variety of programs. I will confirm, but I will make sure that they're aware of this program as well, and that we are signed up for it, so that they can be a resource to people as well. I would like a motion to approve my signing of this vendor's agreement.
So good.
Thank you, Brent. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mal Corca. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I'm hoping that, well, I hope it's a service that those who are in need can take advantage Next comment related to the budget. We are actively working on the budget. We have had two workshop meetings where we have been going through in great detail in the budget. I am also, since this is my first round doing this, am spending a lot of time going line by line, understanding what's in each budget line, understanding what is coming, what we no longer have to pay for, because obviously we have increased costs for fuel, for utilities, and both of which seem to be going up and down, so I think it's going to be a variable number, but it's very probable it will be more this coming year than it has been. And so just want to make sure that we've got things covered, and so certainly at the next board meeting, we will have, we will be posting prior to the meeting a proposed budget. We do have two workshop, well, we have, the next workshop meeting that will focus on the budget is this coming Thursday, March 17th. You're just required to wear green if you come. I think we are not having the 24th, because I think two folks aren't available, so we will not have the March 24th workshop meeting. If we need an additional meeting, we will do it in the beginning of April, and we will notice that appropriately. The next village board meeting is April 11th. And with that, does anyone have any other business that they would like to bring up or discuss? I'm hearing none. This is now a public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Either here? Yes, come on up, Steve. Can you grab them?
Yes, Steve Zarcha, 92 Cambridge Drive. Two things, still got heavy equipment coming through. And the other thing is, when you're pulling out Amper's onto Route 9, the tree, when you go to look north, you're supposed to stop at that white line they have on, they painted there. But there's no way you can stop there and see any traffic approaching from the North Broadway. You gotta pull out, literally, your front end is just on Route 9 to see a traffic coming.
And that's due to the tree that's there?
That's due to that tree.
And is it the trunk of the tree, or is it the branches?
It's the trunk.
It's the trunk.
Is it on the bridge, Delaney?
Yep.
Take a look at that.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, then it appears like no. We do not have a need for executive session this evening. And so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry. I will get it, it's like flagged all over the place. I need a motion to pay bills after audit.
So good.
Thank you, Brent. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you very much. You'd think talking about the budget, I would be remembering that we have to pay those bills. Now we have the opportunity for adjournment.
I could make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Brent. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Very efficient meeting.